All right.
Good evening. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here. The time is 6:00 PM and this meeting is hereby called to order. We have the presence of a quorum and the meeting has been duly called and notice of the meeting has been posted for the time and manner required by law. First up are information items, first being the profile of a graduate update.
All right, we have, this is an important item because, you know, the profile of a graduate is kind of what we're about in Fort Bend ISD. So, Deanna, are you going to start this off? Or, so I know Dexter's going to present this evening, but we have done a lot of work and you're aware of some of it, but we want to do a full update for the board this evening.
Yes, as Dr. Dupree indicated, our Assistant Director of Enriched Learning Opportunities Dexter McCoy is going to be presenting an update on the work that we've done. The last time the board received an update was a year ago in the fall, and we're very proud of the work that's been done. A lot of integration of the profile pieces into the curriculum. So, without further ado, I'm going to hand it over to Dexter so that he can share with us the specific work that we've done, some things to celebrate, and then what our next steps might be as we continue to build the system for two of the attributes of the profile of the graduate, which are collaborator and effective communicator. Dexter?
There we go. All right. Good evening, Mr. President, Board members and Dr. Dupree. It is a great honor to join you this evening to update you on our work of the profile of a graduate since last year. It was important to create the profile of a graduate so that we began with the end in mind. Planning was student-centered and aligned with what our community, both internal and external stakeholders believe are the critical attributes that all graduates from our district should possess. Now, this work was deeply personal for me. As a graduate and product of the great education that Fort Bend has for generations provided, I was equipped with the skills that I needed in order to pursue college and a career that have been deeply fulfilling. The profile is the vision of what our graduates should be, ones whom are prepared for the ever-changing world that awaits them, so that like me, every student from every campus in every part of our community has a goal towards which to work. In tonight's presentation, I will update you on the work of the task force in the 2017-2018 school year. We'll discuss what we've accomplished and the great work we've seen on campuses already, and we'll explore the work ahead of us in truly infusing the profile into everything we do here in Fort Bend ISD. The majority of the task force was campus-based, which offered rich conversation on future implementation efforts. As you can see here, we had a wide cross-section of stakeholders, which allowed us to really get true advisement on the work as we developed it. To appropriately build strong competencies in the attributes, the task force recommended a tiered approach to implementation of each of the attributes and rolling it out over the next number of years. The task force elected to build out in Phase 1 the effective communicator and collaborative team member attributes. To support the development of these attributes and the work in the critical areas, the task force work was divided into three subcommittees: curriculum, evaluation, and recognition. The curriculum subcommittee developed standards and strands within the standards for integration in the curriculum from kindergarten through 12th grade. They also developed attribute success criteria and learning progressions. The evaluation team audited the campus improvement plan and the campus support team walkthrough tools. They also audited the social-emotional learning assessment tools from various school districts and created a sample student survey that will help us ascertain the success of our future implementation from the student perspective. And the recognition team audited reward systems in the public, private, and nonprofit sectors. They designed concepts that informed the creation of images associated with each attribute, and they also developed the specs, or they developed what the concept for a future digital application might look like. In designing the rubrics for effective communicator and collaborative team member, the curriculum subcommittee led by Dana Cox, the Technology Integration Coordinator in Teaching and Learning Division, broke the rubrics down into three critical subcomponents. For effective communicator, they broke it down into self-expression, social engagement, and point of view. And for the collaborative team member attribute, they broke it down into contributions, relationships, and goal-setting. The team then further broke each attribute down by the specific skills that the students would use in exhibiting the attributes and the concept through which they would exercise each. Now, the rubrics and learning progressions were integrated into all core curricular areas from kindergarten through 12th grade. Teachers may find the learning progressions and rubrics in the course notebooks for each unit of study under the integration focus. Curriculum writers also provided teachers the context that they would use in exercising and implementing the learning progressions and rubrics for each attribute in each unit of study. Now, the evaluation team identified several areas of current alignment in the campus support team walkthrough tool, and they asked campuses to include measures for the profile in the campus improvement plans. A great product of this team's work was a T-test crosswalk tool to aid principals in their goal-setting conversations with their teachers. The tool you see before you here today takes the various T-test dimensions and aligns them with the effective communicator and collaborative team member attributes. Now, the recognition subcommittee was tasked with developing recommendations for how we recognize students and staff as they move along the progression of fulfillment of the profile attributes. As you can see, a product of that team's work was the creation of attribute icons, because what we know from our research is that learners clearly associate images with concepts that they learn, and they produce this great work. These icons will be used for any future badges that might be produced in recognizing student growth. The task force explored existing systems of recognition throughout our district, and we found campuses that are taking on great leadership in recognizing our students. Here you see examples of Oyster Creek Elementary School, which has really taken great leadership in promoting student nominations and staff nominations of students who are caught exhibiting the various attributes of the profile. This community made effective use of the members of the community around them in celebrating students as they move along their progressions. Recognizing these strong efforts, the task force recommended creating a central database of recognition systems from which campus principals may choose, rather than creating a centralized protocol that may not fit the individualized campus culture and climate. Now, we know that the most critical component of our work is transforming instruction. In alignment with the curriculum goals of purposeful communication and accountable talk, the profile is being used as a tool to give students the language they need to effectively set goals and communicate their needs, such as the case with the graduate talks that take place between Hunter's Glen and Cornerstone Elementary Schools. We also know that transforming the cultures of our campuses is critical to the success of our work. With the profile mandate to prepare learners to be capable members of society, campuses are finding ways to align existing systems with the profile of a graduate. Campuses like Travis, Lake Olympia, and McCullough are making effective use of character education tools, positive behavior intervention, and restorative practices to promote greater student ownership of the learning environment. As part of the feedback and review process, the profile coordinating team interacted with principals, students, teachers, and members of the community. The team met one-on-one with principals, a sampling of principals from elementary and secondary schools, and we set up an advisory team of core principals known as the Trailblazers. Much of what the principals had to share focused on informing teachers early and helping them to discover their why connected to the profile. The principals did raise a great need for the development of a toolkit that would clearly define the roles and tools accessible to campus administrators in their efforts to serve our students. Now, students focused a great deal of their feedback on the ways we recognize students and their attainment of profile attributes. They also expressed a strong emphasis and focus on developing age-appropriate recognition systems for elementary and middle school students that might necessarily be different than for high school students. And teachers expressed great excitement for using the profile as a tool for integrating social and emotional learning into our classrooms. Now, with that, they also expressed a need for additional support in creating lesson plans that would help them to integrate it into their classrooms. As a result, teaching and learning integrated the profile into Sirma Professional Development with an emphasis on professional learning communities. Teachers participated in an experiential activity that highlighted for them the usefulness of effective communicator and collaborative team member in their lesson planning across curriculum areas. A great deal of the community feedback focused on how we're developing these attributes in our adults in our school district. They focused a great deal of attention on how we're developing them in all of our adult learners across all levels of the district. Moving the work forward, three design teams with specialized content expertise have been formed. Teacher and admin learning will focus on that professional development that not only helps to build the social-emotional competencies in our adult learners, but also helps to really develop the skills of the profile attributes in our adults in our district. The student-teacher-admin recognition team will develop the tools that really help to recognize our campuses, our students, and our teachers as they themselves work to take on leadership in fulfilling the profile attributes. The product of this team's work has already been the revision of the FMH local policy addressing graduation ceremonies. And the final design team focuses on how we build culture here in our campuses, in our district. This team will begin their work and put together that toolkit that school leaders are requesting that truly outline all of the tools in the wheelhouse of a principal's, in the wheelhouse that the principal can use for defining culture and addressing culture on their campuses. Now, let's look at the timeline of work ahead of us. The first two design teams have already begun meeting, and they are expected to complete their initial phase of work in the early spring of this year. We'll continue with initiating the work of the building culture design team later in the spring, and that will continue in an ongoing process of resource sharing. Now, in the summer, we'll continue our infusion of the profile into our professional development, and we'll also integrate more student learning experiences in the summer. Now, we expect to be able to develop out in full the remaining attributes in the 1920 school year for full implementation in the 2021 school year with an ongoing process of monitoring and refining. Now, this is our work in fulfilling our district's mission of inspiring and equipping students to pursue futures beyond what they can imagine, and this is our effort in getting that much closer to fulfilling our vision of graduates who truly exhibit the attributes of the profile of a graduate. I now stand open to your questions.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. That was a wonderful presentation, very thorough. Which one of you was first? Addie, Mrs. Halliger?
Just quickly, again, that was a wonderful presentation. I think this is your first time presenting to the board, so job well done. As part of a member of the Vision and Planning Committee, I was really excited to see the work that you all have done, especially with the different committees, and looking forward to seeing what we're going to be doing in 2019-2020. I mean, for me, it definitely embodies what we wanted, I guess, our vision of what we wanted to see profile of a graduate to kind of come alive, how it would come alive. And I just have one quick question for you as you all build this timeline. I mean, the badges, we talked about the badges, we talked about all these things, I mean, just spot on. With the graduation, though, is it, will there be something that says, you know, hey, I've met these, all these different components at the end? I think that was something, I'm not sure if I heard the answer of that tonight, but...
So, that was a topic of conversation with the design team, particularly that subcommittee that focused on recognition. And so, as we enter this next phase of work, we will actually outline and design what that might look like.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Halliger. Mrs. Tosin?
Yes, I'm going to echo that. I was really excited to read through the report that you guys gave, and it was nice to see all the work that everyone had done on the subcommittees. So, I want to thank everybody who participated in that. I know some are here and some are not, but please pass along, I think, the appreciation of the board for all the work into this, because this is critically important, and it's the foundation for our local accountability, our local assessment and local accountability that we're developing now. So, thanks for that. Just a couple of quick things. First of all, I want to say I was really glad to see that that the evaluations would be a tool for improvement and not be punitive. So, I was really glad to see that, and I just wanted to kind of bring that to everyone's attention, that that's definitely what I think what we envision. The other thing, I'm going to just throw out a couple of some questions and maybe some suggestions just to see if you guys had considered these things. I really appreciated the section on modifications. I thought that was really good, that we're taking into account all of our students, those who have jobs outside of school, those who care for sick family members, those who have to care for their siblings. And so, I really particularly appreciated that, because I think what we don't want are any of our students to not have an opportunity to meet the goals that are in the profile of a graduate because they're so overburdened at home. I wanted to throw into that mix to make sure that we're considering our students, of course, in special ed, that their modifications may be needed, and I can't envision any right now because I haven't really seen the curriculum and how it's being incorporated, but I just want to make sure that we're keeping that at the forefront to make sure our students with disabilities have opportunities, of course, to earn these badges and these recognitions as well, because sometimes it's not as easy, whether or not it takes extra time or extra support for them to maybe, you know, gain some of this, some of these recognitions. So, I just want to keep that in there, too, and maybe think about how we would incorporate that into our ARD meetings. So, I just wanted to throw that out there. The other things I had some questions about, so I looked at the examples of point-worthy activities, and I'm sure that these are just examples, and there are going to be many more, but some of the things that came to mind is I saw that for effective communicator, we're looking at competing in speaking competitions, and I know writing is another form of communication, and perhaps organizing social media campaigns, things like that. I want to make sure that we're tapping into all of our students' creative juices and how they might be communicating, because these days our kids communicate in 140 characters or less. But, you know, I want to recognize that our kids have some of those talents and skills, and those may be ways as well for them to gain points. I also thought, when it comes to effective communicator, we're implementing restorative discipline in all of our campuses now, or at least many, if not all. And have we thought about effective dispute resolution? And whether or not that's an opportunity for our students to gain these points and this recognition, especially within the context of our restorative discipline practices? I know it's something that we're always focused on, behavior and discipline, and this might be a good, another good way to incorporate that. Let me make sure that was it. Oh, the other thing I wanted to ask is, so I was, I guess this was in the context of collaborative team member, but it could be with any of our attributes. Are we including things that our students do that are Fort Bend ISD activities? So, I guess what specifically came to mind for me was our leadership program. And, you know, only, I know a lot of times we don't double count. So, for like National Honor Society and leadership, if you're volunteering for one, you can't double count it for the other, you have to do extra. But I was thinking in the context of this, you know, are our students going to get credit for some of these if they are in the leadership program, or maybe in the youth and philanthropy program, or maybe in some of those other programs, it may be ways for them to gain points? Have we thought about that?
I think when we think about a recognition system, I think we really need to think about all of the different ways the kids may be exhibiting those pieces, because depending on what arena they're in, you know, that will develop a skill, given the audience that they might be addressing. So, I think that something that we talked about in one of the community-based accountability design team meetings was we need to be thinking about things in a different way. Typically, we create barriers that sometime impede our own work, so we need to be mindful of really removing some of those barriers and really thinking about it in terms of how every experience may enrich and support the development of an attribute, rather than only getting credit here or there, or double-dipping, or things of that nature.
Well, and I appreciate that, because we were just having a conversation about, you know, our kids are so, I mean, they're so driven these days academically, and, you know, there are lots of pressures put on them, whether it's from STAR testing or from this top 10% rule, and they're trying to, you know, see what else they can do to build their college application. And what I don't want us to do with profile of a graduate is create a something else. We're trying to teach them these things, but I want to make sure, you know, and other board members can weigh in, but I think we want to make sure that they, if they're doing these other things, it doesn't hinder them from gaining the points for profile of a graduate, because they are learning exactly what we want them to learn by doing those things. So, I just wanted to throw that out there. And then, finally, to Ms. Halliger's point, I thought, you know, I think it would be excellent to recognize them at graduation and maybe even think for our high schoolers, you know, we have academic awards. Shouldn't we be thinking about another way to perhaps recognize these students who are distributing these, who are conveying these attributes or learning these attributes in some kind of awards night? Or, I don't, it may be a lot of kids, I don't know, but I just was kind of thinking about that. Thank you guys so much. It's very exciting work.
And I do just want to add, you started off with the recognition piece. This was great work that was coordinated by two other folks who helped to usher this work in, and that's Dr. Tracy Van Wright, Coordinator of Innovation and Continuous Improvement, as well as Dana Cox, who was a former coordinator for Technology Integration. So, I thank both of you.
And I know you're going to be thinking about how to incorporate this into leadership and those other types of programs. I'm sure your mind is already spinning in that area, so thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Tosin. Mrs. James?
Thank you, Mr. Rudeen. So, I will echo the comments of my fellow trustees, so thank you for an excellent presentation. One of the things, Ms. Tosin, that you just mentioned about was not wanting this to be another thing to do, and we definitely, that is not what we envision, another thing to do, no. I think we, in thinking about these attributes, many of them are the how or the, you know, the process, more, a process for learning, more than they are an endpoint. So, when we talk about implementation, I guess that's the kind of thing that I'm envisioning. And so, maybe when we think about recognition, when the students are able to apply their learning or show others or teach others, then we can know that they're, that they've mastered those attributes. So, that's just an idea. Also, at first I was like, the adults learning? Wait a minute. But then I realized, how great is that? Because then they're modeling the behaviors for the students. And they're, if, as we recognize that we are all learning how to be better leaders or better communicators, or, you know, all the things that I've learned being on the school board, it's a journey, right? I didn't end high school being, I mean, I was a pretty good communicator, but I wasn't. I've certainly developed that skill as time goes, has gone on. So, I like the concept of our adults as learners and modeling for the students that life's a journey and that we're on it together, and we can all get better, every single one of us can get better with these skills. And my third point is that you mentioned, Mr. McCoy, in your presentation about choice. Choice for the campuses as far as how they want to implement and recognize students. Choice, choices for teachers and different opportunities in principals, and I really like that, because again, this is not one more thing to do. We want to provide, I think our vision is to provide the tools so that we can enable our students to learn these skills, and the adults can enable them. We want them to own them, own it. We want them to be working towards it, but not in a passive way, in an active way. So, thank you very much for the presentation. I really appreciate it. And thank you for all the adults in the organization that have been part of the design team and the task force and are continuing to serve to work on this project. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. James. I'd also like to echo what all of my trustees, fellow trustees, had mentioned in the last few minutes. Mrs. James really hit on something that I had been thinking about for the past day was, how do we encourage our students to continue the journey of the profile of a graduate? Because it just doesn't end at graduation. So, really keeping the journey going for them, I think that would be great if we could encourage or teach, or... I think that would be helpful. And then, Mrs. Tosin said something that I was thinking about as well in regards to profile of a graduate attributes recognized through leadership, but we also have FFA, athletics, ROTC, speech and debate, all of those clubs. We have so many clubs that we could really plug into, and I look forward to it. Once again, it was a wonderful presentation. I'm excited about it, and thank you. Next is board governance. Our first quarter financial report for the 2018-19 update.
All right, Steve?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, members of the board. So, just a few comments. I don't have a formal presentation. The report was sent out along with a Harvey update last week. Just a few comments. We are already ahead of budget on the student enrollment. You know, so our numbers are higher already, which is certainly a good thing. That was before snapshot. We did receive a $2.8 million in the prior tax year value audit that we had mentioned whenever we did the, did our budget amendment. So far, our general fund has loaned $4.3 million to the 2018 bond program, you know, as of September, $4.3 million. And then, we, one thing that we have done is we paid $1.3 million of Hurricane Harvey expenses and received revenue of $221,000 from FEMA. We got some information from FEMA recently that they may be changing some of the rules, and so I'm trying to find out what other districts have learned, and so I'll be giving you an update on that next time, next time we're together. One thing that we've done in the meantime, though, I know that one thing that was sent out late last week was some information on the governor's cap plan, 2.5% cap plan. And what we see, there's not enough information for us to really model it. He talks about a 2.5% cap with the difference being made up by state funds to keep school districts whole, but it really is a tax rate compression plan, similar to one thing that was proposed by a different advocacy group. And so, whenever we, we just, we don't have enough to model the impact to our revenue, but we were able to model what the impact would have been to our tax rate if this had been put into effect from 2014 going into 2015. And our base dollar tax rate under these same rules would have ended up going down from a dollar to 83 cents. You know, so a 17p decline during that time. With the state, again, making up the difference, but I don't, we don't know enough about the mechanism and what that would look like. And also, in the, in the report that we did get, there was no mention of the debt service fund and how that would work. So, I'm going to be in Austin at the Texas School Alliance Wednesday, and I know that they're looking at things and trying to interpret things, and as soon as I know more, I'll put together an update for you.
Thank you, Mr. Bassett. Mr. Rice?
Mr. Rice?
Mr. Bassett, I just had two questions. One, on the FEMA recovery, I think you said we spent, was it $1.8 million, and we've got $261,000 from FEMA?
Well, this was just what we paid, the general fund paid $1.3 million of Harvey expenses in the last quarter. Okay, we've paid more than that. I don't have the entire update in front of us, but what we've gotten so far from FEMA is $221,000.
All right. In total, or just in the last quarter?
That was in total.
In total. So the delta is what insurance isn't going to pay and what FEMA is not going to pay. And so what was it again, one point?
Right. Well, that overall delta in terms of what we were expecting FEMA to get is in the $2 to $3 million range. Yeah, Kelly's giving me the nod on that. So about $2.5 million in total is what we, you know, we're hoping to be able to get from FEMA.
Oh, that's just what we've received so far.
Yes, sir.
We still have hope to get some more.
We still have hope, but they may be changing the rules and all.
Yes. And the next question is, I know you're going to Austin, we don't have all the details on the governor's plan and so forth, but how can, how can the state compress the tax rate and, without having an offsetting way of raising revenue somewhere, to make up the difference?
There's two things we're speculating on. The online sales tax, okay, rulings are going to have a positive impact on the state. To what magnitude, I'm not sure, but that would be a number in the Bs. And then also you have the, something the state hasn't been reluctant to do for the past several sessions, even though it's been discussed in some bills filed, the closing of that equity appraisal loophole that Mike Collier had spoke about during his campaign. And according to his website, that's a significant amount in the $5 billion range. And so there's money out there in that regard. It just depends whether or not those steps would be taken. But again, the mechanism for how this would work, it's a while before we're going to get some kind of detail on that.
Okay, well, I'm glad to hear that. I'm glad to hear that there's at least discussion on that. Of course, that will take quite a bit of political will and courage to make that happen.
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. We will now convene in closed session under the Texas Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551, and those sections listed in the agenda and for the purpose of private consultation with the board's attorney on any or all subject matters authorized by law. We are now convening in closed session.